Hi, everyone, we're gonna start. Welcome, everyone, to our Wednesday, October 23rd, School Committee. If you would join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I would just like to introduce our School Committee. To my right, I have Mr. Tony Gelfi, Mrs. Rachel King, Mrs. Lillian Holbrook, Mr. Michael Dolan, our Superintendent, Mr. Swenson, and to my left, I have Leanne Terleki, the Student Advisory Chair. I have Mr. Hammond and Mr. Florence, and my name is Susan Prewindowski. And we will start with the approval of minutes. Motion to approve the minutes of September 25th. Motion by Mrs. Holbrook, second by Mrs. King. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. All right, and next, we'll move on to correspondence recognition. Mr. Swenson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, we have one item under recognition and correspondence. It comes from Mrs. Angela Watson, who's the principal at Bridgewater Rainham Regional High School. And it reads, "I am pleased to share with you that Kira Newberry, a junior at Bridgewater Rainham Regional High School, has been selected to represent our high school in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts at the Congress of Future Medical Leaders in Boston, Massachusetts this past June. The purpose of the Congress is to honor, motivate, and direct our top students in our country who aspire to be physicians or medical scientists, and encourage them to stay true to their dream. During the Congress, students about the state learned about the state diagnostic tools and are inspired by world-changing researchers, which included Nobel Peace Prize winners, top medical dean students, leaders in medical research, and cutting-edge technology as leaders from the private industry. This is a high honor. It is an indication of one that is achievement through significant success in the field of science, technology, engineering, and math, as well as someone who personifies the high standards of leadership and character. Kira Newberry is every respect is a very respected model student and one whom we are have great pride to represent Bridgewater Rainham Regional High School. So, we'd just like to congratulate Kira Newberry on that incredible honor." That's all we have on the correspondence.
All right. Next, we'll move on to our education reports. And first up, we have the Student Advisory Council Report. Mrs. Holbrook.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Tonight, I have the distinct pleasure of introducing you to the Student Advisory Board members. These students document and report out on events, club activities, and achievements at the high school, or things going on in their community each month. First, before I introduce you to the students, I would like to introduce you to Ms. McCord. And if you could just stand up, Ms. McCord. All of this could not be possible without her wonderful leadership. Ms. McCord will once again be serving as the student advisor this year for the School Committee Student Advisory Board. This is Ms. McCord's fifth year advising this group and her ninth year teaching at Bridgewater Rainham Regional High School, where she teaches United States history to and advanced placement United States history. She's looking forward to another year of working with these great students. Okay, so prior to the students giving their report this evening, I'd like to tell you a little bit more about each member, what activities they are involved in, and what motivated them to join the Student Advisory Board. The first one is Chloe Godfrey. Chloe will serve as the co-chairwoman for this year. Unfortunately, Chloe could not be here with us tonight, as she had another commitment. So, I will wait until the November meeting to introduce her. Next, we have Leanne Terleki. And Leanne's also serving on the board, and she's returning this year for her second year as on the board as a student advisor. She is a senior, and she will serve as co-chairperson of the Advisory Board. In addition to this, Leanne has served as the Vice President of Student Council. She also is a member of the YES Club and the Peer Leaders Bridging Lives Coalition. She is a member of both the girls varsity soccer team and tennis team, and is excited to continue with the Advisory Board again this year. So, Leanne, we'll hear from you first.
Hi, good evening. Ashley, my name is Leanne Terleki, and I was speaking about Halloween for the Hungry Drama Club and the Rainwater Fall Production. So, this year for Halloween for Hungry, Bridgewater Rainham Student Council will once again be holding its annual Halloween for the Hungry fundraiser. This twist-on trick-or-treating will take place on Halloween night, with students essentially trick-or-treating for canned goods and non-perishable items instead of candy. Student Council asks that those who are donating leave a bag, or as much as anyone is able to give, of food outside of their doorstep to be collected. The food will then be donated to the food pantry, where those who need will be able to gain access to it. This is one of Student Council's major events, major events throughout the school year, and all of those involved are excited to be part of this great fundraiser. For Drama Club, the BRRHS Drama Club held auditions in October for their upcoming Reader's Theater production of Letters by Ed Greer. For many wars, letters home was the only way for a form of communication between soldiers and their loved ones. This play brings those letters to life. The production will be presented Thursday, December 5th, at 7:00 PM in the BR auditorium. A cookies and cocoa reception will follow the performance. Tickets will be $5 in advance, $7 at the door, and will be available soon. Veterans will be free with ID. For the Rainwater Fall Production, the Rainwater Players will present Disney's Frozen Junior on Saturday, November 23rd at 2:00 and 7:00, and again on Sunday, November 24th at 2:00 in the BRRHS auditorium. They'll be meet and greet with the characters after each performance, and tickets will be $10. More information will be available soon. To help defray the cost of these shows, the Rainwater Players hosted an evening on vendor bingo on Saturday, October 19th. Many vendors rented space for a fun evening of shopping in bingo. The vendors also donated prizes for bingo. It was a great evening for friends and family of all ages.
Thank you, Leanne. This year, we also have Libby Sorrow, and she is returning to the School Committee Student Advisory Board for her second year. Libby is a junior at BR. In addition to serving on this board, she is also a member of the Student Council, School Climate Group, and Sign Language Club. She is also a member of the Field Hockey Team. Libby is excited to continue her participation in the School Committee Advisory Board this year. We'll hear from Libby next.
Hi, I'm Libby Sorrow, and today I'll be talking about the college fair and the new teacher reception. On September 23rd, the college fair was held at school for everyone. Many local colleges from the New England area sent representatives to the school. Students walked around the tables and spoke to the representatives of each school. Representatives helped inform the students of all the good opportunities their school has to offer. Fan bits for the school were handed out to the students. The college fair was a great opportunity to get my questions about colleges answered by the representatives of each college. The new teacher reception was held on October 21st to welcome the new teachers at BR. Reception was held by the School Climate Group, led by Mrs. White and Mrs. Murdock. The School Climate Group gathered at the reception to greet all the new teachers, who this year are Mrs. Neckridge, Mrs. Bennett, Mr. Perez, Mrs. Suarez, Mrs. Webber, and Mrs. Short. They also celebrated Mr. Renguet's move from math teacher to assistant principal at the high school. The reception was an enjoyable way to meet all the new teachers and welcome them into our BR family.
Thank you. Thank you, Libby. Next, we have Sarah Pettit. And this school year, Sarah Pettit, it will be her first year serving on the School Committee Student Advisory Board. Including the Student Advisory Board, Sarah also participates in Student Council and is a member of the Newspaper Club and Debate Team. Sarah is eager to represent the school environment within the School Committee and is delighted to highlight all of the enriching activities or any events that involve the students in Bridgewater Rainham Regional High School. Sarah?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Sarah Pettit, and tonight I'll be talking about Open House and the French Field Trip. Bridgewater Rainham hosted their annual Open House on September 19th, 2019. Students and their parents were invited to come and tour the high school, as well as meet with their child's teachers. Starting at 5:00 PM, seniors and their parents also attended Senior Night, held in the auditorium before the Open House. Parents were able to see their child's schedule in chronological order, as well as meet and discuss their courses with their respective teachers. This year, Bridgewater Rainham also invited the eighth graders from both Bridgewater and Rainham to come to the school and want to see what typical high school courses and schedules were like. Eighth graders were able to give were given supplementary schedules to follow. During a study block in the schedule, or before or after the Open House, the club there was set up in the cafeteria showcasing the numerous clubs and sports available at BR. This year's Open House was very successful and gave parents an insight into their own child's schedule at the high school. On October 16th, 2019, French and art classes from Bridgewater Rainham Regional High School visited the Museum of Fine Arts in Boston during the school day. Students from the French classes, and specifically from French III, are studying French art and the impact it has on the culture and language of France and other French territories. At the museum, French students viewed paintings from several different artists, such as Picasso and Pollock, showcasing different styles of art, ranging from Impressionism to Abstract. Students from the French classes had to write an analysis and an explanation of the paintings in French, commenting on the style and techniques used to create the masterpieces. Concerning art students, they explored artwork over the Museum of Fine Arts for a scavenger hunt. Although shorter than expected, students from both the French and art classes were able to see excellent examples of art from around the world. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Also serving on the board is sophomore Ian Farrell. Ian is new to the School Committee Student Advisory Board this year. Ian is a sophomore, and outside this board, he participates as a secretary of the school DECA club. As well as DECA, Ian is also part of the boys' cross-country swim and spring track teams. Ian is very excited to begin his first year as part of the board.
Good evening. My name is Ian Farrell, and tonight I'll be talking about the new Earth Science Geography Club and our school DECA club. So, for the first time ever, the Earth Science Geography Club has officially started. Headed by Ms. Kelly, this club gives members a further inside look at the world around them. This club will be having many field trips to numerous sites based around the world. Some of these field trips may also count as community service, as certain activities on the field trip include taking steps to help make the earth that we live on a much healthier, cleaner place. For DECA, within the past few weeks, the BR DECA club has commenced. DECA is a club based around the ideas and actions needed to succeed around the world of business. Students have the ability to choose from a wide variety of business categories to compete against students from other schools. This competition simulates what it would be like to solve real-world problems in certain branches of business, such as entrepreneurship, finance, hospitality services, human resources, and much more. This year has brought many new incoming students, as well as a new teacher, Ms. Bennett. The DECA club is currently in the process of coming up with new fundraising ideas to help raise money for this year's DECA competition. And this concludes our Student Advisory Report.
Thank you, Leanne. And as you can see, we are very fortunate to have these remarkable young men and women who will be presenting to us monthly. Thank you, and we look forward to your report at our next meeting in November.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have our MCAS data update. Mr. Powers. And I believe this is a presentation that...
Good evening, Madam Chair. I'm the School Committee Superintendent Swenson. I am here tonight to give you an overview of our 2019 Spring MCAS results. I will talk to you a little bit about the district, the district results, and then go school by school. Certainly, at any time, if you have any questions, please let me know as we go through this. Just to give you kind of an overview of in terms of which students participated in the MCAS this past spring, as you know, it is administered during the spring to all of our students in grades three through eight, and then our ninth and 10th graders as well at the high school. So, all of our students, grades three through eight, participate in English Language Arts and Mathematics. All students in grades five and eight participate in Science, Technology, and Engineering. And all students in grades 10 participated in the ELA and Mathematics. Our students at the high school participate in the Grade 9 Biology MCAS. You'll notice when I'm presenting the data for the high school, the results actually get reported as grade 10 students. So, what happens is when they report their grade 10 scores, they include their grade 9 results. So, even though it looks as though they took the 10th grade Science, Technology, and Engineering assessment, it's actually reflective of the 9th grade Biology results. We do have some students, depending if they, you know, do move in sophomore year, they weren't here freshman year, they may take a different assessment of biology, but the majority of our students take the 9th grade Biology. And for the most part, we did administer the assessment online this past spring. We obviously had a few areas, a few students that still took the paper and pencil, as well as the high school science, the high school Biology test was. But that will all be transitioning this year, and we'll be going over to online for the majority of our students. A couple notable changes, and these aren't necessarily new, they're recent, but just to refresh your memory, in around 2017, the department went to a new scoring system in ELA and Math, and most recently, in Science, Technology, and Engineering for grades three through eight. There are still four reporting categories. However, the new reporting category is referred to as the Next Generation Scoring System, compared to the old one, which is referred to as the Legacy Scoring System. You can't actually compare the two. So, for example, an advanced score in the old legacy scoring system, the numbers do not equate to the exceeding expectations. They're different numbers, they're actually different calculations, so therefore, they really can't be compared. And our students in grade 10, this past year, they did use, you'll see up there, we go with results, the Legacy Scoring System, but again, that's transitioning for... And this just gives you a snapshot, and again, I tried to correspond the colors to what DESI uses in parent report, but you can see up there are four reporting categories: not meeting expectations, partially meeting expectations, meeting expectations, and exceeding. So, you can see the numbers are really different. For example, the old scoring system, the Legacy Scoring System, used a 200 number range, so the numbers are completely different. But just to talk to you a little, a bit about our district results, you can see up here our English Language Arts for all of our students, grade three through eight, how we did as a district, and then obviously, how we did compared to the state. You can see the, as you can see, the results there, the state on the right and our district is on the left. Just comparatively speaking, when you look at the top two categories, exceeding and meeting, in ELA, our students in grades three through eight, we had about 58% of our students meeting or exceeding expectations compared to 52% of the state. Please with those results. Mathematics, same type of setup. And again, when we look at our results compared to the state, especially in our top two categories, we're looking at roughly 59% of our students meeting or exceeding expectations, and only 49 at the state level. And anytime we're above the state, that's... And then obviously, Science, Technology, and Engineering. And again, you look at our results there compared to state as well, we're roughly at 53% exceeding and meeting expectations compared to 47% for the state. And again, that's just for our grades five and eight students. The next part of this is to talk about the accountability results. So, really, we get scored and reported out in two different areas. One is the assessment, how did our students actually do in the assessment, and how is the district, and how are our individual schools going to be held accountable? There's obviously a formula that goes into this. They really look at our progress in terms of meeting our targets. They factor in last year's progress against this year's progress, they add them together, they multiply and then add them together, and then they get a result. You can see this year's target is 60%, our performance is 60%. And the yearly annual target is around 75. So, if you were hitting 75%, that means you're meeting all your targets. We're at 60%, so you can see that our rating is substantial progress towards our target. So, we haven't quite met our targets, we are well on our way. The next slide, just to give you a little bit more information, I apologize, there's a lot of data up there, so it's probably hard to read. You'll see numbers zero through four, and again, schools in the district are rated against certain criteria, the first one being achievement, so how did we do in ELA? How did we do in math? How did we do in science? Next is growth in ELA and Math, high school completion, progress towards English Language proficiency, so how did our ELL students do? And then there's some additional indicators. Did we reduce our chronic absenteeism? Did we have many students taking advanced coursework? And you're rated, again, zero to four, four meaning that you exceeded, you exceeded the target, three meaning you met the target, two means you made progress, but you didn't quite meet the target, one, there was no change, and zero, if you didn't receive any points, if you have a zero up there, meaning that you actually declined. You'll see that some of those actually have dashes, that's just because there's not a reported category there. So, those are not factored into the results overall. But you can see each category, again, has points earned, total possible points. So, for example, if you look at achievement, you can see for ELA, total possible points were four, we earned two points as a district, meaning that we made progress, but we didn't quite meet our target. Same for math, science, there was no change in our results. Again, we got five out of 12 points there. You can see growth, again, we made progress in ELA, math, we met our targets. For high school completion, obviously, because we're looking at all students, they're not factored in there. When you look over at the high school grades, you can see that four-year cohort graduation rate, we actually exceeded our target, we actually declined in our extended engagement rate. So, looking at those students within a five-year cohort versus a four-year cohort, and then obviously, annual dropout rate, we obviously exceeded our targets there. And by that, I mean, we, just the opposite, we actually reduced the number of dropouts, even though we exceeded our target. And then obviously, our English Language students, English Language Learner students, there was a decline in their performance as well. And then you can see for chronic absenteeism, we met our target there, so overall, we got three out of four points, and then you can obviously see the high school grades on the right side as well. All those are factored in, give our annual target of 62, compare that to last year's, that's how they come up with the... Again, just to look at the high school results, you can see up there, and if you'd like me to go through each one, I certainly can, but you can obviously see via the biography. And the reason why, the way the state reports it out, is the individual school compared to the district compared to the state. And obviously, as you know, you know, we do have other in-district programs for our students, so just because they're not at the high school doesn't mean they're not taking the MCAS. So, it would be, the numbers really are very similar, but that's why they show three different people. You can see, for the most part, in all categories, we are, again, outscoring the state, which is really what our target is, always been. And you can see the accountability results there. One notable result I will point out to you is up the top there, and it may be hard for you to see, last year's target percentage in terms of how they scored overall was at 33%. And again, if you remember, I said the target really is 60, I'm sorry, 75, you want to be at 75%. This year was at 60, so they went up from 33 up to 60 this year, so that's quite a jump. So, hats off to Ms. Watson and her team at the high school. We're very pleased with their results overall. BMS, again, you can see up there in terms of the graphs, and like I said, happy to go through them all if you'd like, but you can see overall, again, our target is always to be above the state average, and you can see... Absolutely. Well, I, yes, I do think the idea is that, you know, 100% of your students would either be proficient or advanced. I don't know if it would ever be realistic to have 100% of your students in the exceeding category. It certainly is a target and something we strive for, but in terms of being realistic, I don't think so. But ideally, you know, it is possible that we would have a certain grade level that would have 100% of their students meeting or exceeding. Here, I'll cut the graph off at 60, so it looks like we're there. No, I know what you're saying, I'm just... Right. Follow. Absolutely. It's true. We are, absolutely, and that's something that we definitely pay close attention to. One, we obviously look at our DART districts to see how we're doing there, but really, the benchmark is the state. That's, you know, when the state releases that data, they, you know, they do tell you to use it as a benchmark, how are you doing compared to the state? And certainly, we want to be well above the state, and you can see, depending on the school, and depending on the grade, and the content area, we're either right with the state or slightly above, or in some areas, we exceed, but that is definitely our goal, not just to be above the state, but obviously, to continue to improve. And then again, BMS accountability results. And again, just to point out for BMS, one area to note, you can see last year's results compared to this year. Last year, they were at 37%, this year, they're at 60. So, again, a nice jump for Mr. Caleb, Mr. Hines, and the staff at BMS. Next is RMS. You can see now, again, you know, you start to look, you know, depending on the grade level, ELA, the results are fairly similar between the state, so that's something that we would definitely take a look at and say, okay, what is, you know, what's going on there? How come we're not, you know, well above the state in those particular areas? Same thing, we would do the same thing for math, the math's a little bit better, we're at 56% compared to 49% for the state. And then same thing with science, but in terms of overall, we're fairly close, we're at 55% for ELA versus 52% of the state. So, we know we have a little bit of work to do there in ELA. And then obviously, science, as you can see there, we're at 52% compared to 47%, so we are above the state. Now, I see the RMS accountability data. Again, one, you know, thing to note, too, for all of our schools, none of our schools or the district itself is in the requiring assistance category in terms of accountability, which is obviously a key thing to note. As you know, in the, under the old system, they used to level the schools. So, if you were Level 1, that would be a top-performing school, all the way down to Level 5, being taken over by the state. They've since changed that, and they do it now based on what type of assistance do you actually need from the state, and all of our schools in the district falls into that, not requiring assistance at this time. Again, you see the Williams results in front of you. Go through those if you have questions. Law Liberty. As you remember, last year, Law Liberty was a school of recognition, and although they did have a slight decrease in their scores, they still did very, very well. We're very proud of how they did. They're at about 70% meeting or exceeding expectations in English Language Arts, and they are at 67% compared to, I'm sorry, 67% for math, and then compared to the state, I should go back to that. So, they're at 70% for ELA, the state is at 62 for math, they are at 67, and the state's at 49. So, you can see that Law Liberty is still doing quite well compared to the state. And, you know, we did say last year, it certainly is a challenge, once you get to the top, to stay at the top, that's even sometimes more of a challenge to get there. But obviously, as we've said, you know, they are still doing very, very well. You can see that they are still meeting or exceeding their targets. Again, that number was, there, that magic number is 75, so they're coming in at 87. So, they're still exceeding their targets in most areas. Feel very proud of Law Liberty in there. The Mitchell Assessments, you obviously have that information there in front of you. ELA, again, compared to the state, the state's at 52, we are at 63, so again, above the state in ELA. And then for math, we are at 51 compared to 49 for the state. Again... state in ELA. And then for math, we are at 51 compared to 49 for the state. Again, we'd like that gap to be a little bit bigger compared to how we did. But one thing to note, again, look at, you know, last year's numbers versus this year's numbers, 39 up to 53. So again, we would, you know, certainly feels though, the Mitchell school's doing well under Mr. Bray's leadership, along with Mr. Bratt, and they're moving that school in the right direction. So Mr. Bray continues to do a great job in terms of instructional leadership and moving his school wherever he's at. So a big shout out to Mr. Bray. I did want to just kind of touch upon this for the parents in the audience, or certainly for the many watching at home, and certainly for the school committee, just to kind of go over what the results will look like. Parents will be getting, obviously, they already have their parent guardian report, and it'll, you know, highlight some key information. Obviously, what they're going to show you is the results, they'll break it down into category. If your student only took ELA in math, and that's all that will be reported. They're using here an example of eighth grade, so it was actually ELA, math, and science, technology, and engineering. They give you the achievement level, so this particular student met the expectations in ELA, partially met them in math, and then met them in science, technology, and engineering. They did give some, obviously, they give the overall score, what the score was for a number, and they give you the score ranges there, so you can see where exactly you fell within that range. And then they give you a growth percentile, again, compared to the cohort of students having similar results to you in the past. So that's the first part of information that is given. I did include what it looks like at the 10th grade level, only for those parents, because it will indicate whether or not they have met their high school competency determination, which is obviously what's needed to be, to be a high school graduate. So again, it looks a little bit different, it doesn't necessarily give a, you know, met, exceeded, it really says passed, or has not yet met. Again, it just gives a little bit different information. You can see there for biology, it obviously has the old. Thank you, Ms. Holbrook, that's a great question. So there's actually several opportunities to retake the test. So again, depending on the subject, kind of depends on the time of year when that retest is given, but the students do have an opportunity to retest each year. So again, if this student doesn't pass it in 10th grade, they can take a retest in 11th grade, and then obviously continue to do so from there, all the way up until throughout their 12th grade year. And so again, just to kind of show the color correspondence there, this would be the, you know, second to fourth page of the report, what it would look like. It kind of gives you a better description of what each category means, what the reporting categories are in terms of number-wise, where you would fall. That information there, you can see the gray bar right there, that's just an indication of if your child took this test multiple times, what range is expected that they would fall in. So you can see, obviously, this particular student's at 522, you know, there is the expectation that that student would perform a little bit better, but also a little bit worse, depending on the time that they, that he or she took the exam. And then again, just some additional information on this particular slide, about growth, you can see there, it shows where your child is, where the school is, where the district is. Really, what we're always shooting for is between 40 and 60, that's ideal growth. Obviously, the 50th percentile is, you know, smack dab in the middle, but we're looking for our students to fall between that 40th and 60th percentile. You can see that, you know, this particular student had very, very high growth. So from one year to the next, they obviously performed very, very well. And you can see, for the most part, the district, and these are just sample examples, they're not our district, but you can see. The other thing that obviously this shows you, on the left-hand side, it gives you some historical information about the student's performance, and then it gives you the average score. So you can see how your child did compared to the district, and again, compared to the state. And then lastly, it just gives you some more detailed information in terms of item analysis, what the results were, how they scored, what were the reporting categories, or the assessed categories, and just gives the parents a little bit. Happy to take any questions? That's a great question, Mr. Florence, thank you very much. So a couple of things that we've done, as this data has become available and rolled out, we've met with all of our building administrators, reviewed the data with them, offered additional sessions with Ms. Richards, our coordinator of teaching and learning, to sit down, pour through the data, what exactly does it mean, what do we see from the district level compared to maybe what they see at the site level. And then Ms. Richards has made herself available to the principals to actually go out and work with the faculty and staff. So I know she was actually at RMS today, going over MCAS ELA data, looking specifically at writing, talking about instructional, talking one, first, about the data, talking two, about instructional strategies, how maybe they need to shift their instruction. She's offered that at the other sites as well. So I know she has a plan to go out, spend time with the principals, spend time with the staff, and really looking at the data, and if there are areas that we need to improve, spending some time, again, with the staff, putting It's not in this information, Dr. Prenduski, and I don't know off the top of my head, but I can certainly get it to you before the end of the meeting, or I can even... Yes, yes, we have very few students that end up needing to take the retest.
Actually, why don't we...
Take it out of order?
Yeah.
Motion to see.
Meg, out of order.
Meg, out of order, I don't know what number she is, sorry, Meg.
She's E.
Item E, out of order.
E and F. I'm guessing, I'm guessing we're going to do F, so that she can do the presentation and leave the screen down. Motion by Mr. Dylan, second by Mr. Galphy, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Ms. Meg, you're up.
I don't, but I can pull that up. Okay, sounds good. Yep, that's perfect. Well, good evening, Chairman, Good Woman, Dr. Prenduski, and Superintendent Wentz, and members of the school committee. It's my pleasure to be here with you tonight, present to you the Unified Classroom, an enhanced version of our Power School parent-student portal, which we have been using. So as you can see here, this will look familiar to you, this is a view of our dashboard that we were familiar with, which we have been within operation until October 1st. As you can see, something's familiar here, the menu on the side, there was a list of the students' courses and their grades, current grades. You could flip between your students here, okay? Well, and then if I clicked on a number grade here, anything in blue, you'd see I would, up would pop a list of how, what made that grade, what was the numbers behind that grade. And we liked it, we were happy with it, but people wanted more. They wanted more of a connection to the classroom. So... And we introduced the Unified Classroom, that creates a, more of that connection for both students, parents, and teachers to the classroom. And if we hop on, I'd just like to jump right into the stuff we all want to see. So once parents make their Unified Classroom account, and their existing account, did enter their username and password, and click sign in, and off they'd come to view the dashboard. Maybe if we wanted to turn down the lights, we might see that a little better. But right here, you'll see, is a list, a calendar view. Here are the current grades, this shows the upcoming assignments and recent assignments that have been graded. This area right here, show posting of news from the classroom, like the teachers might post, hey, remember your algebra test, kind of like a little... Let me start using that. Now, I can also, up here, click between students. I have multiple, my child here is Matthew Cogan, he's tough notch. All right. So it's, it's... By just logging in and looking at this screen, I can get a nice glimpse of what's happening for my student for that day, or get a, just get a little temperature test of how things are going. If I were to click on quick links, which is right over here, that would bring me to this menu, which you'll see pops out, and it has a lot of links that we're familiar with. It has ones, like, one big one, that was very helpful to everyone, everybody liked. It has the school bulletin, current grades and attendance, another shortcut to that. It also includes, remember the annual reregistration, and AKA, that was the link to our electronic student emergency contact form, which was, we were excited to say, was quite a success this year. Instead of that paper form that we would send home each September, we did it electronically, and we got about 81 percent response back from that form. And then we follow it up, we hope that next year, it will only get better. We plan on releasing that a little earlier in the year, before school starts giving parents a little time before that rush of the start of school to fill out that form. But we were excited how well it went. And the feedback, we got a lot of nice feedback, which is always a bonus. Now, if you click on the calendar, the calendar, this might look a little overpowering, but it does show at a week's view, all of the assignments. Now, these might not be all assignments that student had to do, but it shows what the teacher might have graded, but also what's upcoming. And it is color-coded, and that would show like a color coding, depending on how the teacher determines it, but a color coding for what's a test, what's classwork, what's homework, things like that. All right? So now, right above that, you'll see, the next one is the progress button, and that is the grids at all the assignments. And this is where, oops, this is where, if you go here, you have little column headings, it shows the date the assignment was due. And then it has what's called flags, and those are notations that the teacher can make to point out if the assignment is missing, or your child was absent, or let the child know they were absent, which they probably know, but it kind of stands out there for them, or if they were exempt from that assignment. And then the next thing you'd want to do is, then there's class pages. And this is the bit that gives you a little more of a sense of what's happening. So it shows all, Matthew's class is here in this list. If I clicked on that Algebra 1, I would go into this Algebra 1 class with Mrs. Smith. And I'd have a little, here's Mrs. Smith, she's working high, thank you. I would have a little description, tell the student a little about the teacher, and then underneath here's a little class description with a link to the syllabus. And then the teacher can also put up some important stuff she wants to highlight, and that would be her grading policy, which is always helpful to know. And then you see she has a calendar here, and this is a link to the textbook resources that are online, and gives the student the code and how to get in. So that's...
Okay.
Yes, sir?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, George. Do we know how many, or what percentage of class pages look like this?
Well, we had a, we had a half-day where teachers took some time, and then we had the month of September for them to get their pages going. And their pages are evolving. I can see as, as they get using it, as the year unfolds. What you don't see right here, and I'll show you in another one of the samples of a lower grade, is over here, you can have sub-pages to this page.
Okay. Do we have provided professional help for teachers?
We have, yes.
Thank you.
And then we do have in the buildings, but we offer continuous support. So we do have Power Teacher Pro in-house trainers, a train-to-train kind of model, that work with the teachers. And then there's also visiting them during faculty meetings and the PLCs and those kind of things. And then they always reach out too. But it's always a model we're trying to improve. But so I'll skip on here. Here's a sample of a middle school page. And also, you'll see the middle school teacher, she used a few different blocks. She has here some important links to resources that are helpful for the student and the parent supporting their child. Also, she has a connection to the dojo page, but this could easily be a doorway into her Google classroom. Also, down here is some important documents. This might be a study guide that's needed for the upcoming test, or worksheet that they need to fill out, kind of like, you've been diagrammed this. And over here, she has her calendar, which is another way a student can click on a date to see what's going on on that date. Okay? And then, so this is a middle school, and then here is a sample elementary. Now, you might say, well, what's going on here with Mrs. Parker? Well, Mrs. Parker just, oops, I didn't see, Mrs. Parker just set up her page a little differently. She has those sub-pages over here. So she has one for wonders, and a one for everyday math. And so that's why it just looks a little different. Okay?
Excuse me, is there a link that goes to the ST Math also, or...
Right. So on the everyday math, she might have her link, but in this case, with this teacher, she had an ST Math. Give away some, a second there. So on this here, she has the ST Math link right there. So this is a link block where she has those important links. Okay? And so Will Hawsters, you have the sample elementary. And so what's up with the app? Because we all love the app, and that was one of the And that was one thing why, because Unified Classroom is Power School portal. And one thing why we didn't step to the enhanced part is we enjoyed the app so much and what it offered. And we didn't want that app to go away. Well, it doesn't. Parents and students can continue to use the app as they always have. So, if you use the iPhone or an Android, you use your existing user ID and password you've always used for your parent Power School portal. And so does the student. I did, I was going to show you side-by-side with the parent, what when a parent logged in, what they seen, and what a student logged in and they seen. Excuse me. But it's very, it's identical. The only thing a student can do more is pass in, pass in assignments, which... So, that's an exciting thing, and people are very happy with that. So, I wanted to pull up, point out for anyone watching, anyone here tonight, that we do have a growing library of resources on our website. So, if you go to our website, you'll notice a very fashionable link here, Unified Classroom. You click on that, it leads you to these resources. In production right now, instructional videos that will also be posted that will provide you with, you know, video instructions on how to create the account. But, I think that's all. Do you have any questions? Stay tuned.
Will he endorse the production of the videos?
Okay.
Is it the actual teachers that are involved in that?
No, that was ju, that's me. Myself and the team of Power School trainers in-house that are going to, are working on those, put those up. But we find it will be whatever, whatever mode that people, will be most helpful to people to assist them in creating those accounts is what we're going to place up there. So, those should be posted in the middle of next week.
And then what has the response been from parents, from teachers with regards to this?
Well, I think the teachers have been anxious while you're waiting for it, because we've talked about it a lot. They've done some page preparation. But with anything new, I think it's a time to, you know, build up confidence with it. With parents and guardians, I believe, as we move closer to report kind of time and that sort of thing, they'll be more accessing Unified Classroom. They do remember have access on the app, so parents still feel very comfortable with that. There isn't, as you can tell, there's a lot included in Unified Classroom, so it doesn't have a dedicated app. And so, that's why it's nice to have that. And sometimes you just want to go to the app to get the quick information, and that's the intention of an app, to be friendly and quick to view. And students are signing on as they, as they need to. So, we see a kind of growing use.
I have a question, Meg. Is this where parents can communicate with teachers? Or is this more to just gather information?
No, they can also communicate. There's, on any one of the pages, you'll see there is a message button here, where if they click on that, they can send a message to the teacher.
And the teacher's aware that...
And the teach, and...
The message is...
And they get a notice, they get notified in their inbox. And also, a teacher can send to a parent that way. And up here, there's a communication where you can send messages also.
Any other questions for Meg Tony? Mr. Gelfe?
Do teachers actually post homework, like download or...?
They can. There are types of assignments they can build, and I like to call them like Assignments 2.0, where you can link discussions, they can take little assessments. But they can also post the assignment, the student can pass it in that way. Quite a few of our teachers are using Google Classroom to do that currently, and they feel comfortable with that. So, they haven't bridged that practice over to Unified Classroom. Yeah, as it's growing. And many of it's, and this came out of a lot of the birth of parents saying to us and students saying that every, that when they go to something, that everybody, when they go to each class, someone's using something different, like Dojo, or Google Classroom, or Blackboard. But this kind of houses everybody, it gives everybody a front door. They might go into separate rooms once they, you know, log in or walk through the front door, which Unified Classroom is. But it's a one place where you begin, and it kind of, it helps with organization, not only for those students, but it also helps the parent to know where to go. Yeah, I'm going to switch over.
Alright, so we are going to have Meg stay at the podium and talk about our October 1, 2019 official enrollment.
Okay, so as you know, each October, we report to the state our SIMS data, which is 52 elements. And one is students enrolled on October 1st. And you have in front of you those numbers. As you can see, at Mitchell in PK, we have 151 students. In kindergarten, we have 255. In first grade, we have 255. In second, we have 256. In third grade, we have 252. For a total of 1,169. At Williams Intermediate School, in fourth grade, we have 215 fourth graders. There's 237 fifth graders, and 259 sixth graders. For a total of 711. At Bridgewater Middle School, we have a total of seventh graders of 301, 251 eighth graders, or a total of 552 Bridgewater Middle students. At, going to Merrill Elementary now, in kindergarten, we have 164 students. In first grade, we have 166, for a total of 330. At La Liberty Elementary School, in second grade, we have 167. Third grade, we have 181. Fourth grade, we have 177, for a total of 525. At Rainham Middle School, in fifth grade, we have 166. In sixth grade, we have 172. In seventh grade, we have 185. And in eighth grade, we have 147, for a total of 670. The therapeutic day program, we have one seventh grader, two eighth graders, six 10th graders, one 11th grader, and four 12th graders, for a total of 14. At Bridgewater, Rainham Regional High School, in ninth grade, we have 326. Tenth grade, we have 357. 11th grade, we have 359. 12th grade, we have 344, and 12 students who are attending, who are SPs, for a total of 1,398. Attainers, these are students who are service-only, we have 31, for a total of 31. Excel, which is our chartered high school, we have one 10th grader, eight 11th graders, 17 12th graders, for a total of 26. And then our out-of-district students, we have one kindergartner, one first grader, two second graders, five fifth graders, six sixth graders, two 7th graders, two 9th graders, four 10th graders, five 11th graders, seven 12th graders, and nine SPs, for a total of 44, giving us a total enrollment of 5,470 students. Okay, now, and that's where we stood on October 1.
Can I?
Sure.
Just to clarify those out-of-districts. Those are out-of-district students who may have chosen to go to a private school or a charter school. They're not special education out-of-district, correct?
No, these is...
This special education.
Yeah, these are students who are attending out-of-district placement due to their IEPs.
No, these are our, these are our students that are out-of-district placements for special education programming that are service in district. Correct. I know what you're saying. That language, that language in parentheses is a little bit...
It says number...
Oh, I, yes.
Yeah, it says non...
It just say, it includes special education attendant. Say, just special education.
Okay. Alright, I just...
It's not school choice, or...
That's what I was...
Those are our out-of-district kids.
Thank you.
Is there any comment?
No, I just, I mean, looking at some of the numbers at some of the classes, grade levels, you look at some of the rising numbers, especially at the elementary. But even at the middle, I mean, we have 7th grade with 301 students. We average any given year 200 to 250. It's definitely a bubble group, but if you look at Rainham Middle, that same 7th grade is the highest number in that, in that grade, in that school as well. Definitely have to keep an eye on, obviously, we're receiving a lot of purchase and sales agreements. We're getting a lot of folks contacting us stating that they're going to be moving to the district within the next few months, could they begin here until their homes come online? Which we have granted them that opportunity, because we don't want students to have to go start in another district and then two months from now, when the house is available to them, to have to uproot that student and have another transition during the school year. But definitely, at the elementary level, we've got to keep our eyes on some of those growing numbers, especially at the Mitchell.
Could you also elaborate on the importance of the October 1 for the budget?
So, as we've stressed to our administrative team at the last administrative council, and every administrative council, when we talk about October 1 numbers, October 1 numbers equals money. So, we have to make sure that we have clean October 1 numbers to report to the state, because we do receive additional funding based upon how a student is coded. If a student is special education, ESL, or a special education student with significant needs, there's a different coding, and that is additional monies that we get through Chapter 70. So, we have to make sure that that, that this information's being reported, checked, which we ask all of our principals to check that information, along with their secretaries at the building level. One thing that Meg has done a great job of a few years back was creating central registration. I think by central registration being implemented, it's allowed us to have one unified way of inputting this information into our database system. Before, you had folks at seven different sites possibly inputting the information in seven different ways, and sometimes things fell through the cracks. And again, we don't want anything falling through the cracks, because again, it equates to funding for the district. So, the October 1 numbers are very important in terms of budget. So, I do give Meg her kudos for being on top of this, thanking my building principals and administrators for checking this information and making any corrections that they deem necessary. And also, I really truly feel as though the central registration piece has really helped us in getting some real clean numbers at this time. So, thank you to Meg and Diane Powers and all the folks that work in that area.
Any other questions for Meg? Very good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alright, so we are going to go back up and go to our Budget Subcommittee Report. Mr. Gelfe?
The Budget Subcommittee met on Tuesday, October 15, 2019, at 5:30 PM. Agenda topics included vaping detectors, with local advocate Pat Neri tending to continue discussion on the possible installation of vaping detectors in the high school bathrooms. The district will continue to address the student vaping issue. We received an update on the breakfast program participation, and will continue to review the data in the upcoming months. The monthly total thus far was 2,100 breakfasts served district-wide. As part of the facilities report, several repairs requiring approval were brought forth. These are emergency replacements due to catastrophic failures at both the Merrill and La Liberty. At Merrill, a temporary boiler had been rented at a monthly rate of approximately $9,000. The request was to replace two boilers at Merrill, one hot water heater at Merrill, and one boiler at the La Liberty. So, in the form of a motion, with the endorsement of the Budget Subcommittee, I move to approve the repair project of two boilers and one hot water heater at the Merrill Elementary School and one boiler at the La Liberty Elementary, to include the cost of the temporary boiler lease and not to exceed $300,000.
Motion by Mr. Gelfe, second by Mr. Dolan. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that would eventually work its way down into Rainham, where they would be reimbursing the...
Correct, we'll be looking to put that on the spring warrant.
Alright. Is that all you have, Mr. Gelfe?
No, no. So, just to repeat what you just said, claims have been submitted through our insurance company and are under review. Any remaining balance of the repairs will be sent to the town of Rainham for reimbursement. Request of approval for two three-year Bobcat leases. Mr. Pacheco submitted a request to enter into two three-year leases for two track loaders at a cost of $9,415 each, totaling $18,830 per year for three years. Including in the cost are two snow thrower attachments, two buckets, and full warranties for three years. One machine will be housed at the Rainham Middle School for use on the Rainham side of the district, and the other at the high school for use on the Bridgewater side of the district. So, in the form of a motion and with the endorsement of the Budget Subcommittee, I make a motion to authorize Mr. Pacheco, in his capacity as Director of Facilities, to enter into two three-year leases for two track loaders with attachments totaling $18,830 per year for three years.
Motion by Mr. Gelfe, second by Mr. Dolan. Any questions? Mr. Pacheco was here.
Madam Chair, just to, as a point of clarification, we heard from the, during our committee meeting, that this was a cost savings to the district by doing this this way versus what was done in the past by renting from someone else.
Correct.
So, for folks that are watching, thinking that we're spending quite a bit of money on two three-year leases, we're actually saving money in them compared to what we used to do.
And they actually can do more things.
Right.
We have, we have one on the Rainham side that through grants rentals is going to be about 13 and change. We have one currently at the high school that is... We have one currently at the high school that is really being kept together with chewing gum and chicken wire right now. So, um, we felt as though getting these two, um, machines on both sides of the district for the additional fifteen thousand instead of the constant repairs to the one at the high school, um, would be able to benefit both sides of the district.
And can they be used, Mr. Swenson, at different schools?
We will be exploring that, yes. I would say, I would say that we could explore that piece to it. Um, there's definitely a need for it, um, at Rainham Middle School, obviously, and here at the high school, but we could definitely explore possibly, uh, usu- usage at other sites as well.
Mr. Pachico.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, because that question, uh, the game plan was the station at RMS, which one at the high school, which one, uh, which we, this, and, and, plus, the, the quarter middle, with, uh, showing the police, we could actually just drive right down the road to it. So, utilizing a snow thrower, actually, it's a more efficient way.
Any further questions? Motion has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
One more sentence.
Okay.
The budget subcommittee reviewed the updates to the capital improvement plan, began its FY twenty-one budget discussion, and received quarterly reports from Mrs. Macedo and Mr. Conley. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much.
My pleasure.
All right, and now we are actually going to move on to the quarterly FY twenty budget report. Mrs. Macedo.
Lady, Madam Chair, members of the school committee. I'll just start very loud. Oh, wait a minute, there it goes. I'll hold it. Okay. Good evening, mem- um, Madam Chair, members of the school committee and Superintendent Swenson. Um, you have a budget report in front of you that, um, is, uh, for the quarter and, but it does also include the first, um, warrant that's in October. Uh, usually, the budget subcommittee meets monthly and we go over each month's budget report, and then we bring it here to you quarterly. Um, just to let you know on a few things, um, we have put on a freeze, uh, starting in October, so everyone got in all their purchases that they absolutely had to have. Um, and we will go forward, uh, by approving, uh, those emergency-type purchases, um, so that we can, you know, obviously, if someone needs something, we have to, we'll have to get it, but, um, we are trying to control the budget by, uh, getting us through the winter, getting us through the heating season, snow season, and hopefully, um, come springtime, we'll be in good, good standing so we can do maybe some purchasing for, uh, going forward. Um, it's always worked for us in the past, so it's been a good measure that, a good practice that we've done. Uh, most of all, these accounts have been encumbered, and we've gone through and looked at, um, any accounts that may, uh, be in deficit where maybe we hadn't planned, uh, for this to happen and then that to happen, or folks have moved around and we planned for them to be at the Bridgewater Middle, and now they've moved to the Rainham side. So, we've gone through all of those accounts and we've, um, corrected any of those issues. There are still a few things that we have to, um, be mindful of and watch very diligently throughout the year, and, um, we're looking at things such as, on page four, um, we always want to look at our sub-line accounts. Right now, there's, hasn't been, um, much activity, and however, we're not into the flu season and, and, uh, the, uh, snow issues or, or other emergencies that may come up during the year. Um, so, right now, all of those accounts are in a healthy situation. We do have one of our special ed accounts for, um, therapeutic OTPT that has an encumbrance that is putting the account into deficit. This is an account we're going to watch. Um, usually, we have an estimate, and at the year-end, we probably will release funds, so hopefully, that deficit of two hundred and seventeen won't be quite what it is right now. But we'll keep an eye on it and also keep an eye on where we will take funds from to cover those types of expenses. Um, another account that, or area that we like to keep track of is in the, uh, on page, uh, page eight, I believe I was looking at. Wait one, no, wait a minute, I think I found the right number. Please, oh, sorry, I'm at the wrong number. I meant pa- oh, there it is, page eight. I had the wrong page. Uh, oh, I know what I want to talk about here. All right, on page eight, um, you'll notice our transportation area. And in the past, we've had some, um, issues with some of our special ed transportation as we've gotten new students in. Um, we've had some issues with, you know, having some transportation costs that were much higher than what we had anticipated. This year, we have everything encumbered. We don't have those big deficits that we had seen. Um, as long as things remain the way they are at this point in time, I think we'll be okay in this area. But again, it's an area I'm always going to watch because there's always new students coming in or students that are being newly identified. Page nine, utilities. Again, uh, electricity. Uh, we knew that we may be, uh, needing to use funding from, uh, facilities or from the base program to help, um, seeing that we do use a lot of electricity. We have a lot of, these buildings are open quite frequently. Um, however, we just did the bid with COMBIES. We had to go in last year and kind of get in the loop with them. We were in with them. We were paying over almost a twelve cents per kilowatt hour. We are now down to nine cents per kilowatt hour. So, we're anticipating seeing some better numbers, um, for electricity. Uh, we haven't gotten our first bill yet because this started as of October first, so I hope in November I'll start seeing, uh, some of that. Bob and I can take a look at it and see how we're doing, um, and then can project out the rest of the year much, much more, um, better than what we have right now. But right now, we're just doing based on trend. So, I'm hoping that that number's going to go down, that deficit there. And, let's see. Page twelve, our last page. Um, as you know, we have, uh, circuit breaker funds that we have in a revolving account, and we are allowed to charge off, um, certain, uh, special education costs like teaching services or, um, materials. Where we find it most effective and the best way and best use of the funding is to use it to help charge off some of our out-of-district tuitions, but we can't charge it off to those circuit breaker funds until we've actually spent the money. So, if you notice on the tuition public school day and residential and collaboratives, uh, range to date and year-to-date, nothing's been spent. Well, that's because I've already charged off what's been spent to circuit breaker. And we still have about another million-two, I believe, in circuit breaker funds. So, I think we'll be able to cover whatever deficits are showing up based on those encumbrances. But again, the encumbrances may also be reduced on their own as students change and move into different settings. Uh, so for this moment in time, I think we're in good stead, and, um, we'll just keep our eye on all those little snow-trubly areas and, um, keep reporting to you on a quarterly basis. Any questions?
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thanks, Cap.
Next up, we have our...
Mr. Conley.
Quarterly treasures report. Mr. Conley. Good evening, Madam Chairman, members of the school committee, Superintendent Swenson. Uh, I want to give you the report for, um, my incoming expenses. I did, uh, provide you with an adjustment sheet that I, um, one of my cells didn't take, so I want to make sure that you had that, um, that was on my incoming expenses. Just on the revenue, um, looking at the sheets, uh, chapter seventy, again, this is twenty-five percent of, um, July, August, um, July, August, and September. So, we're doing well with that. Uh, high school athletic fees, um, doing well, about seventy-one, twenty-five percent. Um, investment of funds, we're, um, certainly over on that, and that figure will probably just in the next, um, next year's budget. But we're doing okay with that. Um, miscellaneous revenue's a little bit low. Um, Medicaid, uh, hasn't come in yet from the state. We'll wait for that. Um, parking revenue fees are just over a hundred dollars. We put in for twenty-nine thousand, we got twenty-nine-one. Rental school facilities, um, we're about sixty-one percent of that. Um, E and D, nothing on that yet. That won't be till near the end of the year. Random construction debt and Bridgewater construction debt, um, we're close to those figures too, to twenty-five percent, uh, and the Bridgewater assessment and the Rainham assessment, again, we're, uh, close to, we're at twenty-five percent. And I did provide you, like I said, with, um, what I had for, uh, income from all of those, and I provided you with the, um, expenses for the payrolls and the taxes, um, and then payroll for retirement, intra- um, insurance and dues, then the warrants that we do each month. I provided that with the total expenses, um, and then take away the total expenses, uh, less the income, and I also gave you my treasurer's bank balance for what we had for each month.
Any questions for Mr. Conley?
Mr. Conley, the, um, construction debt, is that quarterly? Is that why there was no payment in the month of September from either side?
Um, it's not quarterly. It's, it comes at different, the construction debt comes at different times during, um, the year. Um, sometimes in, uh... Yeah, based on, again, thanks, Cap.
Not a monthly, like, yes.
When we, yep, when we borrow the money and stuff, so, um, and there, that's when they make their payments, plus.
Any other questions for Mr. Conley? Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, next, we're going to move on to our CPAC report. Mr. Florence.
Um, on October second, the BR CPAC hosted a meet and greet at the superintendent's conference room. BR CPAC, uh, parent president Kate Dwyer, Kate Dyer, and student service director Paul Jovolos hosted this meeting and introduced the district's special education team and the wide array of educational programs and services that the district utilizes to meet the educational needs of our students. During this meeting, Mrs. Dyer highlighted the many educational resources that CPAC provides to support parents. Each month, the BR CPAC will host an educational presentation on varying topics that address the interests and concern, concerns parents have regarding our students. The next BR CPAC event will be November fourteenth from six to eight PM at La, at La Liberty Elementary. This family, uh, special education night provides parents, guardians, with a place to gather information from thirty-plus organizations that offer services to children with special needs. Local representatives from various organizations will provide parents with support and guidance. While parents are gathering information, children will be supervised in active, in active and sports activities, art projects, and eating healthy snacks. We'll also be holding a raffle to raise funds for the BR CPAC, and John's Dream Ice Cream will be selling ice cream treats. Please join us, all are welcome. CPAC is currently running four different raffles. Winners will be drawn at the family special education night on November fourteenth. Deadline to pre-purchase and return raffle tickets to school is Monday, November eleventh. A flyer with spec- uh, specific details regarding prizes and, uh, and the purchase of tickets has been sent home from each school. Finally, parents and guardians are encouraged to join BR CPAC on Facebook. This Facebook page will share announcements regarding upcoming events along with a variety of educational articles and resources. Thank you.
Very good. Any questions for Mr. Florence? Thank you very much. All right, and now we're going to move on to the Mitchell School Building Project update. Mr. Swenson.
Yes, Madam Chair, and I am very pleased to inform the full committee and members of the audience, both here in attendance and at home this evening. Then on Saturday, October nineteenth, two thousand nineteen, the wonderful residents of Bridgewater exercised their civic duty and voted in favor of the schematic design and project budget, the new George H. Mitchell Elementary School, with two thousand one hundred fifty-seven votes for yes versus one thousand four hundred ninety-eight votes for no, for an overall differential of six hundred fifty-nine votes passing question one. I would personally like to thank all of the wonderful residents of Bridgewater who came out to vote on Saturday. A special thanks also goes out to our incredible team comprised of community volunteers, parents, teachers, support staff, administrators, and school committee members who worked tirelessly over the course of the last five years in order to provide our students and staff with what they require and deserve. Please know that all of your efforts on behalf of the children of Bridgewater are to be commended and greatly appreciated. In regards to next steps, I have been in contact with our OPM, Shane Nohn from Dayless Projects Incorporated, and he has informed me that now the MSBA will prepare a project funding agreement, or PFA, and send it to the district for execution. This updates the project scope and budget agreement and formalizes the MSBA's commitment to fund the remaining of the project. The OPM and designer amendments for design and construction administration services must be executed as well. Please note that these are standard MSBA contract amendments. The MSBA will then execute a work order with commissioning agents. This will include the exterior envelope, fire protection, plumbing, mechanical, and electrical commissioning services. The commissioning agent's fees is paid one hundred percent by the MSBA. Then, the fun begins with module six and detailed design, which is about a ten-month process. First, starting with design development, which will, uh, be approximately four months, then providing documentation for sixty percent construction documents, which is about another three months, and then ninety percent construction documents, which is another three months. Finally, please note that the school building committee will continue to act on behalf of the district to oversee the development of each design phase and approve the submissions to MSBA at the end of each phase. And that is the end of my report.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Exciting, exciting news. So, thank you, Bridgewater, uh, for all the support and, uh, our incredible team as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Mrs. Swenson? Very good. All right, next up, we have our new business, and first is the approval of the high school graduation date for two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year. Mr. Powers.
Again, Madam Chair, members of the school committee, Superintendent Swenson, uh, on behalf of the Bridgewater Rainham Regional High School, I am here tonight to present the potential for the high school graduation date. Uh, as you know, it is, uh, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, uh, part of their regulations. Graduation date approved by our school committee. Uh, currently, the proposed date for graduation will again be a Friday night, and we are proposing Friday, May twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty, and it is tentatively scheduled for six PM. Our desired location would again be on the football field. Uh, certainly, we understand that inclement weather may prevent us from doing so, uh, but that would obviously be a game time decision that we would make, uh, along with Mr. Swenson and the director of facilities, Mr. Pachico, and we would still hold it on Friday, May twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty. If we do have to, uh, change the location, it would be obviously inside like we have in the past in region. Uh, but either way, we are requesting that Friday, May twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty, be set aside for the Bridgewater Rainham Regional High School graduation.
All right, do I have a motion for the high school graduation for May twenty-ninth? Motion by Mr. Hammond, second by Mr. Florence. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? So voted. Thank you very much.
Mr. Powers?
All right, and next up on the agenda, it looks like we need to approve an MOU regarding transportation claiming under Title Four dash E, and I'll just read the motion. Um, actually, why don't I read the motion, then you can, perfect. Uh, the motion is to authorize the superintendent to enter into a memorandum of understanding between the Executive Office of Health and Human Services, Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, the Department of Children and Families, and the Bridgewater Rainham Regional School District in relations to the administration of school or origin transportation costs under the Every Student Succeeds Act to maximize federal financial participation from the federal government through Title Four dash E of the Social Security Act, otherwise known as Title Four dash E. And with that, um, motion by...
So moved.
Mr. Dolan, second by Mrs. Holbrook, and Mrs. Mr. Dolan, second by Mrs. Holbrook, and Mrs. Macedo, if you could enlighten us, that would be wonderful.
What this is going to allow us to do is to be able to now, um, receive reimbursement on transportation for foster students. So we'll be able to get some more funding.
And so we're already picking up these children and this would allow us to actually get reimbursed?
Yes.
All right, so there's a motion made and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. Thank you. All right, and next up, we have our acceptance of gifts and grants. Mr. Swenson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, this evening, I only have one, um, very generous gift to, um, bring forth to the committee, and it's for one hundred fifty non-fiction science books for the Williams Intermediate School, which has been donated by Matria Subaru.
Very good. Motion to approve the gifts. Motion by Mrs. King, second by Mr. Gelfe. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
Thank you. Madam Chair, can I just ask, I'm sorry, to go back to the Mitchell School?
Sure.
Uh, I had a question. I know it's solar-ready, going to be solar-ready, right? Has the district investigated grants or anything to actually get that solar on there or start with? Are you waiting or?
Yeah, it's the town. We'd have to investigate that piece.
Oh, it's not the district.
Because it's a town project. So, um, it is going to be solar-ready. We just have to figure out at that point whether they want to utilize that, uh, equipment to, um, possibly put in solar panels and, and sell off that electricity to, you know, private ventures, so.
The committee is working with the Bridgewater, um, Green Committee. Uh, Dr. Carlton Hunt is the chair of that, so we've been working with him. He's come to a few of our meetings.
Uh, next up, we have public comment. Anyone in the public wish to speak? And before we adjourn, I only have one announcement, and that's that our November school committee, uh, meeting will be November twentieth, and that will be at the Rainham Middle School. Does anyone on the committee have any other announcements? Very good. So motion to adjourn at eight thirty-two. Motion by Mrs. King, second by Mrs. Holbrook. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you.